Called meeting to order at 6:31. And the first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting held on October 12th, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of October 12th, 2021.
I second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Next item is the audience of citizens and any business that come before the board.
Ted? Interruptions for meetings.
That's actually on the agenda.
What's that?
That's actually on the agenda, a little while down the road if you want to just wait.
Oh, okay. All right, whatever is convenient. That's good.
Anyone else? Hearing none. We'll go to, the next item on the agenda is to appointment. Constable Scott Wisner, Officer Scott Wisner is a recently retired resident state trooper. Put in more than his 20 years with them, recently retired, Deep River native or local. And he's got all of his certifications, everything ready. He's already done a little bit of work for us, but we need to appoint him, so.
Well, what's the constable number that we have now? I thought we had?
We have four.
And now this will be a fifth?
No, this will be four.
Oh, this will be the fourth? Okay, alright.
So three part-time and one full-time?
Yes, one full-time and two part-time, filling basically 88 hours of shifts. So we need to appoint him. If we can get a motion.
I make a motion to appoint Scott Wisner, position a constable term to expire 12/1/2021.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is solar panel installation at Town Garage. This really, tonight's just a discussion. I think next month we'll invite these folks back who are managing this project for us. They were, they are through CCM Titan Energy. They sent out a request for proposals. We've got a bunch of proposals for four different properties in town to set up solar panel fields and try to relieve some of the energy costs in town.
Solar panel fields?
Solar panel fields, yeah.
Not building? Are these on buildings or?
One of the projects was on the building. I'll run through.
Oh, okay.
The elementary school, once that roof gets finished, that's going to be one. Up at the Town Garage, in the field in front of the Town Garage.
In the field, okay.
Number two, over at the WPCA was the number three. And number four is on top of the landfill once that gets capped.
Oh, okay.
The project order changed a little bit because the way the projects work is you want to go for the most bang for your buck. On top of the school is small and will not, there's actually a couple of questions once they got the engineers in the building to look at the school, whether it's structurally can support it. It was done, I don't know, I think that, I don't remember, I think that was 1990? Or 1980 or so when that school, that addition was put on? And they used something else that's structurally sound, but it's not built for to support something like the solar panels. So they're not sure if they're going to be able to do that or not. What came up first, and there's not enough room at the WPCA land to actually support a system that's going to be worth that. So the next best was up at the Town Garage because that's ready. So they're going to come in and explain the process a little bit better than I can, both to you guys and the Board of Finance, so that we can move this forward if everyone is in agreement that it's a good thing. Ultimately, though, I wanted to let you know that we can use the energy that comes from that to help offset the costs of five different, up to five different buildings or places that use electricity in town. So we would use the WPCA, the library, the elementary school, and two other buildings in town. And we get up to $43,000 worth of savings over the course of a year. This is a 20-year project and we'll have, you know, we'll get $43,000 off of, basically discounted off of bills for each of those.
Okay.
The only question, I think it's a good idea, but the only question I have is up at the old landfill or when they do the new landfill, is the old one capped?
The old one is capped, yeah.
With a membrane?
You know, that was done so long ago, I have no idea.
Probably not.
Because if it's done with a membrane, you're going to have to drill through it to put your concrete pillars up, right?
Yep, absolutely.
I don't recall.
It's a good concern.
But you forget, if you still got to drill down, you're going to be drilling down into all rubbish.
That's a good thought.
There are things that I would like to find out before we?
Oh, absolutely.
Do some core samples there and make sure.
I remember when it was done, but I don't remember how it was done because we were little kids probably.
There's a lot of stuff buried there.
Well, yeah, that is the old landfill.
Oh, yeah.
The fire department went to many a fire, dump fire there.
And then the only other question I would have is, do we know the size of megawatts, kilowatts, whatever they measure those in? How big the field would be up there?
Yes, I don't, that's why they'll come, they've got all that information. It was, it was smaller than it could be, but not much, couldn't go much bigger for this particular project. This is somehow or another endorsed and it's not managed, but the state kind of regulates it.
The only reason I ask is because there's regulations by the state for prevailing wage on certain jobs, the size of them.
Yep.
And I don't remember the threshold, I think it's two megawatts, I'm not 100% sure. Anything below two, it could be four, I'm not 100% sure on that, but there's prevailing wage tied into that.
Well, those, one of the benefits that I see with this is there's really no cost at all to the town, other than the land. And we're not selling the land, we're just leasing the land. We don't do any of the installation, a private company comes in, builds the whole thing, manages the whole thing for 20 years. At the end of the 20 years, we can either contract to extend the contract, they can remove all of this infrastructure, or they can rebuild it with some, whatever the technology is 20 years from now.
So basically, simple, simple mind, probably a big field of solar panels out at the dumps. Not necessarily any on the buildings.
Right.
But the energy generated by that field, would it be applied to those units of buildings?
Absolutely, yeah.
So you basically sell it back to the provider?
That's exactly what we're doing.
And then they reimburse us?
If our buildings were, if our buildings were oriented right and big enough, then the panels would probably be on the buildings, but they're not.
Well, like John Winkler, John Winkler has them right now.
Yeah, I think Chester Elementary's got some on them. My thought all along was to put them on the elementary school as soon as it got finished. And I'm not saying that we're not going to do that, just right now this project, the best place to go first.
John's been there a while.
Now, those are good questions and we'll make sure to get those questions to them because this is time-sensitive. They think these projects need to be online by the end of March, I think. And because they want to start construction in the summertime, it's not a matter of want to, it's just how long does the state program, this is part of the requirements. So that's, those are good questions, I'm glad we had this conversation because I wouldn't have thought about that. I just assumed they knew it was an old landfill, I assumed.
Oh, just, you don't want, you don't want someone to start a project and then all of a sudden they run into cost overruns or they start drilling to pour the footings.
Oh, yeah.
It's contaminated and then it's a?
Well, you know, the question is, do they have to go DEE? They've got to assume that they do. So those are good questions.
Angus, can we ask questions?
Sure.
We're a little late, I understand.
That's okay.
The power company is going to buy back the power that we're going to generate at what cost?
The power company contracts with the firm that builds these things. We, as a result of building it, they can, they're awarded a certain amount of money. As a result of allowing them to build on our land, we are awarded a certain amount. We're allowed up to, I can't remember what the numbers are, the guy will explain it in a couple, in a month. But we're, there's no cost to us, I don't know what the cost is to the company to build it, but it must be worthwhile because they're doing it, they do it for 20 years and they do them all over the place.
So, you know, the power company buys the power?
I'm not sure the power company buys it. It goes, it goes back, the private contractor, the guy that owns the solar panels, that energy just goes back into the grid, nobody's?
Correct. And that dollar amount?
That dollar amount goes to him and gets applied to us. We don't, there's no cash to change hands between us and the power company, it's simply applied to our bills.
So what's the, so they're going to give us 100%?
No, they're going to give us, I think around 30, 33%.
33%?
Yeah. Might be a little more, but I think it's right around there. We ended up with $43,000 worth of credit.
So basically, they're giving us $43,000 a year to rent our property?
To rent our space, yeah, yep.
I just have one question though. We are doing all this new repair work on the roof of the elementary school. Are they going to guarantee that none of this is going to be destroyed, leak?
Yeah.
And they're going to guarantee it for 20 years?
That's part of the contract. Just like if they were putting it on your house.
I would never have them on my house, but they're going to guarantee it for 20, not completely?
It might have been before you got here, Gary, that they're going to survey the roof to make sure that it can support it, number one. They're not sure they even put them there. So that's why it might just be?
We just spent a lot of money to re-roof the mansion. I just don't want?
No, we're certainly not going to put it up there without something like that.
I would go under the impression that that landfill is not capped, because they were getting grant money about five years ago and had a whole?
The landfill is not capped, the old landfill is capped.
The old Deep River Dome, yeah.
Not that thing's capped.
I have no idea.
And that's my concern, Nick, is that you start doing, you know, clogging in there, you're going to, what are you going to find?
There ain't a membrane down there.
So?
Wouldn't think so, but I don't know. I don't even know how long ago that was done, a long time ago.
So this is to the left, the left of the road coming into the public?
As you're driving into the garage, the field on the left.
It'd be all in everything.
Yeah, no, it'd be a great use, it would save the time and the moment.
He laughed as long time?
No, I know it is. I know it is. I think it's a good project.
It'll be a win-win.
Yeah, I think it's a real good project.
Those are the little questions that I would have, that?
No, those are good questions and we'll look for, I look forward to getting the answers for you. Anything else?
Not on that, no.
Alright. Ted, you're up. Item number six, Plains Road culvert update.
Yeah.
Let me give the update and then you can ask your questions, okay?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say here is, is that, you know, I was, I was out of state, so I missed your last meeting, then I returned on Thursday, 21st. And then since then, I've spoken with three other Plains Road property owners, so we are looking forward to your update.
Yeah, good.
That's here.
Yeah, so our town engineer reviewed the product, the culvert, went, came up with, offered a couple of solutions, the best of which I think is to sleeve the existing culvert. In order to do that, we have to get approvals from DEEP and from fisheries, a part of the DEEP. We've gotten the approval from DEEP. We are now waiting for something from fisheries. It's basically going to raise the bottom of the culvert up about four inches. DEEP says that should, that's not a problem, it's not going to affect anything as far as flooding goes. Now we have to wait for fisheries and make sure that all the fish can get up and down the stream.
Could you explain sleeting?
I think Dwayne could probably do a better job than me, or Nick could, but basically you take a layer of concrete.
You've got a six-foot pipe, you're going to get a pipe that's probably five and a half foot, you're going to jack it in and then they grout. They pump it in, there's little ports in it, you grout it and it works its way. And so now instead of having a six-foot diameter, you have five and a half foot.
Yeah, I think that's?
It's a common thing. We did three large ones down in Bridgeport underneath 95.
Yeah.
You have to do it because if not, you're going to tear up the roads.
Right.
And it seems like the most economical way to do it. I don't, I don't, I don't know it, but it would be good for people that are watching on the camera and all that.
It takes a little bit, you got to clean, got to clean the old pipe out as much as you can.
Yeah.
Right, put a dike in.
I would assume so. They'll probably do one pipe at a time, right?
That's a very serious river back there. That would be my question, is with their deep watering plan, is going to be?
That'd be part of the?
I'm sure they'll have one, they'll have to have one.
They might have a cheating against it.
For deep, they'd have to have all that ever.
That's our road?
Yeah.
What brought this all about?
Mr. Backgo pointed out that the pipes are, I wouldn't go so far as to say they're failing, but their bottoms of them are rotting up pretty good.
Oh, okay. They've been rotting for many, many years, just trying to bring it up, especially this year here with all the storms we've had and everything else. That we've lost, lost metal on the bottom. And whether they're in a process of collapsing, I don't know, if you look in the roadway surface on the outlet side, heavy trucks have gone there, there's distress in the pavement. Now, there's a lot of voids underneath where they're rotted, that would be injected, jacked in concrete.
Yes.
They'll fill all the voids and everything else.
They pump, they pump it in, as they're pumping it in, there's air that rises up and it'll fill all the voids.
Under pressure. And then the watering, you could close one and operate the other, turn it to low flow, whatever, things of that sort.
Maybe another culvert we should look at is the one on West Bridge Street right before BoCo Road. There's two patchways in that road for a reason. It's probably staying out of my play.
Yep.
Yeah, they only last so long.
They don't rot, they don't break out.
This has been going on for so long, so it's really time to take a look at it. Main thing is, we've seen how important that road was this summer with the bridge being down, all the emergency vehicles and everything else. Because over time, some people want to be in it, other people want to turn private, you know, everything else. We just feel as a long-term residents, it's really important to maintain a good condition.
Yeah, of course, appreciate you pointing it out. Well, you know, the town engineers have done these projects, they're town engineers all over the state, and they've done projects in similar situations. And I'm confident that whatever they come up with is going to be a good plan.
So there'll be, at some point, you'll present a set of plans and things like that?
I think we're a ways away from that, but yes. First thing we have to do is make sure we can do it. There's no sense setting the plans at fisheries is going to say no.
Well, that was part, I'm going to be real quick in my questions and whatnot because I wasn't sure where we were with that, but just trying to figure out who's responsible for what versus the Selectman's Office and our Highway Department and everything else. What I want to add today is, alright, so we have a, we have a project in place to repair, rehab, whatever you want to do with the culverts themselves. But what I want to bring to highlight is, is that several times this year, we've had storms with flash flood watches and warnings and some were on your Selectman's posting and everything else. So that we knew in advance and we could prepare for their impact. So as we sit here again today, is that the storm is continuing, we're going to have everyone's command and everything else. The storm was predicted days in advance, with less flood, several inches of rain. So I came home on Thursday and I took some pictures of blockages on Friday and Saturday. So that when you look, so this is how much the area was compromised for passing a four-inch event, flash flood, things of that sort. So that, those pictures are taken on Friday, Saturday. And then again, one of our other neighbors volunteered, he's out there early Sunday morning. And this is what he did, this is the work he performed to clear that out so we could pass that quantity of water. The, here's the debris pile that was left up at the top and everything else. Alright. My point being is, is that this neighbor did that, mentioned here, meeting not so long ago. Another neighbor had his sanding beam down, the whole guy working to take that out. In the past, what I've had to do myself is my tractor with grapple hook and everything, this is just a demonstration, but this is what I've done, is when there's blockage in there, the pieces are so big with a grapple hook tractor, I can hang over the edge, try to lift it out, everything. But I really feel that this is the responsibility of the town, it's not our rate that dwarfs the town. So that's what I'm here for, give you a little time to come back in a couple of weeks. But somehow, whoever it is ought to be able to monitor this, we've had many meetings. We've had to clean it out ourselves several times in this particular season. And I really feel that this is a priority because you can see how compromised the waterway opening is. You have a squash pipe, you have a large area at the base, but once you get to the top, the area is so small, it's very difficult to pass the water. Water goes into a joint pond and it overtops the Plains Road, we got a lot of water over the Plains Road, things of that sort, so. I'll leave it on the table.
Thanks. Have you had water over Plains Road? I don't, I don't remember water going over Plains Road, have you had that happen?
Yeah, yeah, I can show, I can pull up pictures, I can put this picture.
Recently? I just, I didn't notice it, okay.
I would assume that pipe probably wasn't planned for the 100-year flood back when it was?
No, there's a lot of changes. And in my house too, the topography, because you have the sandy gravel.
What was that roof put in, 1950s?
I have pictures of myself back in 40 years. And actually, the old bridge was not unlike the Deep River Farms Bridge, would have had two, two stone columns, a couple of hemlock logs and then oak planking, the town put oak planking on it. So my father was hauling sand and gravel, he could drive over that.
It'll be interesting to see what the engineer says for the 100-year flood, what size diameter they think should be there. Are the pipes adequate at the size that they're at, or should they be over built there?
That much already has been addressed and yes, they are adequate.
Really?
Oh, there's a very comprehensive study, when Laxley was closing up, we had DDP involved and Maguire, this big, big book like that, because they cut the trap riser section into the 40-acre pond, which then takes the peak off. So you went out there for the next day, you'll see water flowing into that back pond. And then it lets it out in a controlled manner. Don Carlson noticed it right away, things like that, other people have noticed it. So it does help the impact of the whole town, because we're at the headwaters and that stream comes right down through the center of town and stuff like that, so, anyway.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So, thank you for seeing what monitoring and surveillance and things like that, we've got a big storm coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is post-farmer's market. A group of folks that were going to run this farmer's market in town this summer, they're proposing to do it up at the Sweet Club. They're just, they don't have the zoning to do that up there, it wasn't, wasn't going to work out. They've put, they've gotten together with the Congregational Church and have put together a proposal to run this farmer's market at the green, right behind the, you know, the church green.
Yep.
Looks like they're looking to get 14 to 16, 14 to 20 vendors up there. It's a nice idea, our vocal farm stand guy is kind of spearheading this, Taco.
Okay.
In order to do it on that property, they need town support.
It is private property.
It's private property, but just the process of doing this, they need to have something from the town. I basically, I want to talk to you a little bit more about it and see if you guys are on board. If you are on board, I can, I'd like you to authorize me to write them a letter in support. I asked Taco, I said, "Most farmer's markets that I know, there's somebody managing this thing and it's a bunch of money, everybody pays and rents to go to this thing, where's that money going if the town's going to support this?" You know, what the heck, what are we, what's going on with that? What he said was, it didn't hear back from the church, but what he said was, the, I bless you, the vendors will be paying to come to this, but any money that's brought in will be given to the church for the rental of the property.
I don't have an issue with it because don't they have their flea market every year on a property? So I wouldn't see a difference between having a weekly farm stand, farming market.
They rent, they rent space for muster parking and, you know, so they have, there's all, there's events, the horseshoes are going on.
Yeah.
Because I assume the horseshoe pits are owned by the, by the church also. So it's, yeah, I don't, I don't see any problem with it, I just, I hope it works. I know the one in Iverton hasn't, didn't stay in action.
Well, they closed that this year.
They closed it.
What they?
I don't know what the reason was, but?
I understood that it was pretty successful.
I thought it was, and then all of a sudden they announced they weren't doing it and I didn't know if it wasn't, and that's, that's not our responsibility as to whether it's financially doable or not.
No.
But yet they close Chester down on Sundays for their farmer's market in downtown Chester, so that's, so that one works.
Well, I actually, I had kind of hoped it would be on the green because then we could, you know, bring people in to get parking at the Adams Parking Lot, but then they come get their stuff at the farmer's market and then walk across to the grocery store and get what else, whatever else they did, they can't get at the market, you know, and kind of make that a full trip.
But they're still coming, still coming into town.
It's pretty close, they're still coming in, I like it. It's the same day that Iverton used to be, so there's not going to be any competition, any local competition anyway. I think Sabre might be Sundays.
Saturday.
Is it Saturday?
Saturdays. Well, they were.
Yeah, well, I'm sure they'll continue, they've been very successful down there, so.
I think it's a plus to bring people into the community.
So do I.
If they're going to even go to Dunkin' Donuts to buy a coffee and a bacon or whatever, at least.
And as far as their, their visibility, they're going to be seen there. They're at the Sweet Club, other than a sign, how are you going to know what's going on? Somebody just driving through wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily think to go up to the Sweet Club. So I think just for their location, it would be better for the success of the adventure also.
You're going to get double, double exposure on both sides.
Yep. I'd wish them the best if I could get a motion from one of you guys to authorize me to write a letter of support, that'd be great.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that you write a letter from the Selectman in endorsing or in?
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, next item on the agenda is we've got a lease negotiation discussion that we need to discuss. In order to do that, we need to go into executive session. So I've got to ask the cameras and everyone to leave, I'm going to just, I don't think we even need a secretary in here for that, if you don't mind. And we'll just have to ask everyone to leave, we'll call you all back in, no action will be taken, but I need a motion to go into that.
I'll make a motion, we went to executive session at 6:58?
Second.
Thanks. All those in favor?
Aye.
We came out of executive, executive session at 7:11. No decisions were made, no votes were taken. But I would like to ask for a motion now to amend the contract on the lease.
I would like to make a motion to amend the existing lease with intra-pro.
Okay, up at the?
I think Wildwood Industrial Park. I second that.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Nick Olson with Construction. Nick's been already to discuss some questions that he has. Nick has asked to also speak with the Board of Finance. So rather than, same conversation twice, we're going to, we're not going to close this meeting, we're going to adjourn until the Board of Finance opens.
And then we'll?
When Nick comes up on their agenda, which should be number one on their agenda, we'll reopen so that we can, we can have a joint conversation, okay? So we'll have a motion to adjourn for now until?
Make a motion that we adjourn at 7:13.
Okay, temporarily, we'll reopen again.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no, I, there is no other business before this meeting. And I just, I hope that, you know, by the time everybody sees this, this nor'easter will be gone. So we'll, we'll call a timeout and come back to business in a little bit.
Okay.
Good evening, this is the regular meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance, the October regular meeting of the Deep River Board of Finance. Call to the board. First thing I would ask, can we approve the minutes of the September meeting? Does anyone wish? would ask, can we approve the minutes of the September meeting? Does anyone wish?
I'll make the motion that we accept the minutes of the September meeting.
And I will second that motion. All those in favor of accepting the minutes of the September meeting?
Aye.
With that in mind, I'm going to turn it to Angus. There is a, Angus is still, your Board of Selectmen's still in session. And I believe you have someone who wants to speak with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. So Tommy, if you're tolerant, we will put you behind them.
Absolutely.
That is correct.
Thank you. So we will reopen the Board of Selectmen's meeting and move at seven thirty-five, and we will move on to item number nine on the agenda, which is Nick Olson with construction. These are, I think you could hand these out to the Board of Finance. They have not been distributed to you guys yet. Let me just one second to do that. And we'll invite Mr. Olson up to the table to speak to us all, and we can try to answer any of his questions.
All right. Nick Olson, a lot of people here during my last meetings, I had some questions and some concerns and he's looking for some clarity as with the finance board, but it kind of starts at the process that the town goes about soliciting work for hire. As an example, I was asked to pay or provide numbers for paving and some drainage work along with some other contractors. There's no doubt, I was, you know, happy with the results of paving. It seemed like the taxpayers of Deep River repped the reward and a little bit got the paving. I did get asked to put a proposal together for the specific drainage aspect of it. I have copies. I think you guys seen it. And, you know, there's some items. I was told that what was asked of me was asked of the other contractor, and that the work now being completed does not reflect what was asked on my proposal. You know, I made a livelihood off of construction, and I was ten thousand dollars higher than the low bid. And the scope of work that I was asked to provide, I, the contractor has either yet not fulfilled his obligation to the scope of the work, or there was a miscommunication with what was asked between the people to provide the pricing. Either or, we need to, after this gets resolved with billing, I think a more formal RFP process needs to be implemented for the town of Deep River. I do, I've worked for twenty different towns and municipalities. I've worked for Amtrak directly in the state of Connecticut, and I'm very familiar. I would like to tap Duane's resume of construction, being a union director, and on State Drive, he's familiar with these things. And, you know, some of the bids that we have here, there's dates back from the May eighth or March eighth, and there's dates into April or in August. And it's just, it's not the way government asks for the solicit part. It's not a formal process.
I appreciate that, Nick. Regardless of your question here, we've actually already had in place an effort to get, because of the communication in this particular request for proposals, we had already had in place, and Joyce and Eric and I are working on a template, so that we have something we can just hand to people as opposed to calling. This is the first year that I have not been involved in the actual communications with the contractors. Our foreman of our highway department went to you, went to Dibble Construction, and went to Sullivan Construction to get proposals. So you are correct, it should have been written down. There's no question about that. Because of the lack of community, the confusion, because as you noted, we had to call back each, each of the contractors to try and make sure that we were all bidding on the same thing. My understanding of that project and the way it should have been asked of everyone was that we needed four hundred and forty-four feet of pipe and, and the patch to, to repair the, the work on top of that. I, you know, your proposal is very, is very good, and it's very thorough, but it includes a lot of stuff that was not requested.
Well, last meeting, when we started the meeting, you read the proposal and made it clear to everybody that what you asked of me was what you asked of JJ Dibble.
I assume that that's what was asked, what was asked of you. As far as I know, like I said, and you know that I was not involved in communication between the highway department foreman and any of the contractors. That was, that was the highway department foreman and the contractors. What I asked to get was four hundred and forty-four feet of pipe and the, and the improvement on the, of the road after it was done, after the work was done. Your proposal is a very good one, it's very thorough, but it includes more things than what I was asking for. I didn't ask Eric. I assumed that that was what was communicated.
Okay. Well, I asked last meeting for you to provide a copy of the bill, and I asked you to provide copies of the material that the town purchased, the gravel. And on his proposal, he never told you what he was charging for paving at all?
Yes, he did. It's a separate proposal.
Can we see him?
Yeah. A second to get to it. It wasn't, actually, it was not a second proposal, but we had to go back and, and everyone gave me a second proposal because the, we had to ask for, everyone to, to make sure we're comparing apples to apples. But here's the proposal.
Yeah, right. I have this. Okay. So paving, okay. So on the proposal that I have that you guys provided me doesn't have the paving.
That's because the proposal we gave you, at the time, I think we were talking about the, does that have the not to exceed on it?
This is the same date.
I'm just asking you.
March sixth.
What I just gave you, I'm just gonna see. Okay. This, this is, this is a separate, this is, this is not the same as what I gave you last time. This is the paving. The paving is not included in this one.
Correct.
This is the not to exceed.
Okay. So this estimate's number sixteen oh two, eight and March sixth.
Yep.
As a, doesn't have a not to exceed, but has a day rate and a paving cost.
Right. And we went for clarification, as I did with you on some of the questions with your proposal. And you provided me with a, with a second proposal clarifying that the town was not gonna purchase the materials, was I think the question with you.
They weren't gonna purchase the pipe.
Right, right.
Right. But this estimate sixteen fifty-six is a later dated estimate, fifty foot four, fifteen five pushed forward. Not to exceed thirty-five thousand, doesn't have the paving on it. So now we're looking at thirty-five thousand dollars.
Plus the bid, just like, just like your bid.
Plus eighteen thousand, six hundred dollars.
All right. Your bid for the same thing was, was forty-four thousand plus another fourteen thousand for the pay.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm fifty-five thousand. So what did he charge you for, for gravel?
You're fifty-eight thousand.
Okay. So I'm a little bit more. So if we ask the same thing, my question's gonna be, we had two town, we had two town dump trucks, town excavator, two employees, four employees up there for two days backfilling curves.
Correct.
So again, I got asked.
That's what we do on all of our roads.
Right. But in the scope of work that you asked, you asked us to backfill the curves. There was supposed to be more riprap, and they were supposed to cap the drain pipes in the front yard.
That's not accurate. And I can't, I can't say I wasn't there. What I asked Eric to ask for was four hundred and forty-four feet of pipe and pave and repair the road.
Okay. So the example we're setting here is that our RFP process is not effective.
No. Well, no, and that's why, as I told you, we are already working on a template. And I would have to say, Nick, it worked fine for the previous five years that we were here, when you were getting some of the work. The time that didn't work is the time now that you didn't get some of the work. So we're making it, we're improving.
But the problem that I have here, when I don't, okay, you're improving the process, I'm getting taken, you know, out of equation. When you saw my bid, why didn't you call me back and say, hey, Nick, I don't need you to backfill the curves. I don't need you to hide your seaters, put topsoil in, haul twenty loads of dirt up here. But we could call back to JJ Dibble Construction and make sure we have not exceeded numbers, paving numbers, all sorts of things.
The only reason that, I did call you back, so that we could make sure that your cost was the same. You're correct. I, I can't say you were correct, but I understand what you're asking. That was a good question, and I don't have an answer to that. I, I called him back because I, the same reason that I called you. His original proposal did not offer a timeframe. You offered a timeframe of three weeks. He told me it'd be three days. You said three weeks, three days? No way. So I said, look, do the math. Give me a not to exceed. If it's gonna take, if it takes you a week, takes you ten days, give me a not to exceed. Because I'm sure it's not paying eight thousand dollars a day when you're, you're two twenty-five hundred a day. If it was, if he was doing it to be three weeks and you were gonna be three weeks, you would have killed him. The reality is, I asked him, do the math, tell him to, give me a not to exceed. If you're not gonna tell me how many days it's gonna take, give me a not to exceed. That's what he did.
So is there anybody have any commentary second selection?
So the only thing I want to talk about in this is three weeks versus three days per week.
He was there, he was there two weeks doing the show.
That's not correct.
He told you two to three days. He was there two weeks.
That's not correct.
I have pictures of all of them.
Okay, good.
Every day, he was there two weeks. But if it was not, hold on, but if it was not held to a day rate, what's the emphasis? What are we, what are we worked up about time? Okay? I'm just asking.
I'll tell you why we worked up about time. Because we have, we have to close that road. We didn't close the road, but we interrupted traffic on that road for three weeks or a week?
Okay. He was there.
We paid police protection. We, for traffic for three weeks or a week?
I understand that. He was there two weeks.
No, he wasn't.
Yeah, he was there two weeks.
Okay.
So maybe there's more miscommunication with the foreman.
No.
You guys have any input over there?
Well, you had asked me, Nick, so I'm gonna give you my professional opinion here. The world that I live in, in construction, things are done a little bit differently.
Right.
But in the big scope of things, I can understand why the town does how they do it versus how I'm used to doing it. If this is opened up in a normal, normal bidding when an RFP or a bid specs go out, we could get Johnny's pipe out of Massachusetts, we could get whatever. We don't know what we're getting there. Here, the town tries to keep local people getting a job. Could our RFPs or our specs be a lot better? Absolutely. And Angus and I have spoken about it. Coming from where I come from, you bid. Low bid's not always the best bid.
Right.
Oh, one second, Nick. You had asked me, so I'll just give you a second. So I'm gonna be bouncing around from, you had asked my professional. So my professional is, the state of Connecticut puts a bid out, here's the bid specs, here it is, we all bid. We're all bidding against an apple for an apple. We can't bid an apple against an orange.
Right.
So again, what's happened, it's passed. We have to move forward here. And Angus has already said, him and Joyce are putting together a new form for future projects that I think is the right step in the right direction.
You know.
Because you can't, you can't get, you can't get, you can't bid on something and me bid on something, and I'm bidding on something different than you are.
Right. Well, you know, if you told me to take topsoil and backfilling, out there's ten thousand dollars. I would walk from that way immediately. Walk away from it immediately. They were out there at the town grill, four guys, two dump trucks, excavator, two days hammering it out. Two days. So we're talking about a time constraint. Shade two days off, shade ten thousand dollars off. I can do it. You know? Bids are supposed to come in sealed in an envelope, okay? Let's just say you put it out, you don't like low bid. That's what the three selectmen are here for. This guy's got a bad rap. This guy's got this. This guy's from Bloodlow Mass. We don't want that here. You guys have a right to review the bid process and choose what's right for the direction of the town. But what's not being done right is the solicitation for work. This is, you know, this is not Angus' checkbook. This is taxpayer money, and what needs to be, the value needs to be best, best put forward for the community.
And I, I agree one hundred percent.
And it needs to be transparent. And I'm getting the short end of the stick here. And this is not the first time. Meadow Woods, I asked to do a road last year. We put the paving together. I was asked to put a hundred and twenty-foot concrete retaining wall because the bank was eroding. I was forty-four thousand dollars or whatever it was. Oh, you were high bid. Road gets paved, I come back, they dump riprap down the bank. You asked me to form a concrete wall, a hundred and fifty feet long. No kidding, riprap's cheaper. I didn't get a phone call back saying, hey, Nick, we're just gonna go with riprap. I mean, this is continuing on and on and on. And I, you know what? I may be thirty-two and grew up with some of your kids here, but you know what? I'm a substantial taxpayer myself now in this town. I'd pay a thousand dollars a week to this town hall. A thousand dollars a week. And to just think that this is a charity and it's overlooked and it's phone calls and it's blaming the public works director, and I didn't say this, I didn't say that, it's very unprofessional.
I'm, I'm gonna limit what I say because we are related.
Right.
But I think, I hope that your goal is that from the, from now on, it's corrected and goes forward.
I hope so too.
And I think we, it's all been acknowledged that it will be corrected in the future. What has happened, has happened. We're not gonna rip up Union Street and have you do it, you know, because it's already been done. So I, I, I feel that what you have accomplished is to have the town look more into an RFP, more official, more whatever, whether it be as official as the state or whatever. And what more at this point, other than doing it better in the future, we can't do anything more than that. There's nothing that we can do about it right now. And I understand you're wanting to vent it. I mean, you're a Deep River boy, I'm a Deep River boy. You pay all your taxes, we all pay taxes. But I think we move forward and we.
We sure as, we sure can rip the road back up.
Well, that's right. And we can, we can move forward and have a better RFP and do it, do it better in the future. And I don't know what more we can do at this point.
You speak about local. I bid dirt in the city of Middletown. They give, if you're within ten percent and you're in town with low bid, they give to you. All these things are achievable. I've talked to.
But those are, those are in city and town ordinances.
Well, you get to put them in. If we don't even have a process, because it sounds like we're developing one. You know, Jane Marsh, I've, I've talked to her. She's got all the state ordinances for Deep River that this was already supposed to be happening.
This is, um.
You know, I have nothing, you know, when they go out and pave, I know Fox runs a dead-end road and the one they did on Kelsey Hills, a dead-end road. Did anybody go out with a wheel and measure Westbrook Road? Paving's all based on square yardage. Anybody say, okay, that's what we're doing. We checked this box from JJ Dibble. Roads paved. Do we confirm or get any measurements? I mean, this is six, five, six hundred thousand dollars worth of construction.
We only have a four hundred thousand dollar budget, so.
Well, fine, four hundred thousand.
But Nick, I, I understand what you're saying. During this whole process, I communicated with your, your employee over what we were doing. We spoke back and forth. There was as much good faith as I can, as I can express. It was understanding your frustration with the look of the bids and the work. I understand that. We are gonna continue to work. Remember that six years ago, we didn't, we didn't have anything in place. And we, we just, we've gotten better. As far as I'm concerned, we've gotten better every year at how we're doing this, and we're going to continue to improve. We are, there, there's nobody that can tell me that we are not getting the best bang for our buck on our construction work that we're having done. We can argue about it all we want to, but I will never change my opinion that we are getting the best bang for our buck for the roadwork that we are getting done. The process, the process to get here has, has gotten better, but it is still not where it's going to be, it should be. It will be there next year.
You know, I mean, you know, even the town of Adam, this stuff should be on the website. Okay? You go on town of Adam, bid RFPs, brush grinding. How much you think they charge to they get this out? How much we pay, how much do we pay to grind the brush pile?
Forty, fifty thousand.
Forty, fifty thousand. They're grinding the same pile of an atom for thirteen grand.
That seems a tad bit ridiculous.
The guys.
It's not, it's not apples to apples.
I'm just saying, if you go on the website, they have one bid seventy, they have one bid seventy-five thousand. They did the right process. They did the right process.
We need to compare apples to apples in his case.
Right. That's what we're trying to talk about. They put an RFP out, and they got a contractor at twelve fifteen, it's right on their public. They had one guy for seventy-five thousand dollars.
We had, we did put a bid out. We got, we got a bid from Howard, and we got a bid from Running Brook. Running Brook destroyed. It was forty-four thousand dollars from, from.
Because Howard doesn't have a pump, right?
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. You can write things, you know, the whole...
Howard had, Howard had, Howard had it, he set up that...
It's about implementing a proper protocol.
And we, and we, we have agreed, we've said it, that we're gonna, we're gonna get there. And I don't, I, I think we're, to be honest, in my opinion, we're beating a dead horse right now. I, I believe, huh?
I said, "I'm the dead horse."
No, 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 absolutely, absolutely not the case.
It's, it's not, but, no, go ahead, Angus.
Go ahead.
But it's, it's not, okay, we have to move forward. And again, I'm, I'm a firm believer, and I've said it time and time. I don't care if we're bidding on anything. It should be a sealed bid.
I agree.
That's, that's where I come from.
And that's where we're going.
For twenty, for twenty years, my family did a snow removal at the high school in Junior High. We were the only bidder, but it had to be a sealed bid.
Yep, just on the railroad, five miles.
Okay, I, I, I believe in that. But we have to, it, we have to learn from, I'll call this a mistake, I guess.
Yeah.
We've learned from, we have to learn from this mistake, we have to implement a process. And if, once the process is, okay, we're gonna bid on this, whatever it may be, this road. We're gonna do, uh, whatever. Tower Hill Lake, we're gonna pave it. You wanna pave it, you wanna bid it, you wanna bid it. We're all bidding the same thing.
Simple as that.
Simple as that.
And then, I'm a firm believer of scope review.
Yep.
Just because Gary made, just because Gary made me the low bidder, Gary May, uh, whatever.
Whoa, whoa.
No, but I'm just, I'm just talking in, in general here. That's the life that I come from on professionals. There's always a scope review, and there's always...
Pre-bid meetings, you know, show up to pre-bid meeting.
Low bidder sometimes gets it, and low bidder gets bumped out because of some reason. Again, we don't have all the qualifications here that we need on the state level.
Nor do we need them, but I hear you.
But again, those are one where a lot of times a contractor will get disqualified because he doesn't have his DAS or some certification. We don't have them here because we're small magnitude, but that's the life that I come from. So there's, everything's transparency.
Yep.
So again, we can't keep, and I wanted, Jimmy said, keep beating a dead horse. We hear you, I'm looking straight on, we hear you. Angus and Joyce have started a new program to implement it, and let's move forward on it. And that's, that's my consensus.
That's where we are.
Do I have to ask a question or not?
Yeah.
No? All right, so you, you have Audien's Citizens coming up, correct?
All right. And are these the formal invoices that are coming in from him? I mean, I don't think we should pay an invoice until we go measure the roads. Anybody go out and measure lengths?
It's a fine idea, we'll go out and do that. And you're welcome to join me when we do it.
Okay.
You know, I don't understand, I don't understand all of this, but, um, I do, I understand some of it. I don't understand the all of it.
He gave you square yardage, and he based all his proposals on square yardage, and that should all measure out. We can do, I mean, within reason.
To, to what, I mean, to what end do you wanna be there and measure, other than to prove your point?
I'll just go measure myself.
Well, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering what, I'm just wondering what the point is.
Painting, painting is all based on...
Because, because it's, it's gone, it's paid for?
It doesn't matter, I'm happy to go out there and do it.
Well, the point is, if it's, if it's paid or not paid yet, and, and the menu that he gave you of paving, okay, so he says Westbrook Road A, B, or C, okay? A, B, or C says, you know, you know, this amount of yardage, or this amount of yardage, or this amount of yardage, this is what's included. Now, obviously, it's not down to the micro inch, but if you roll over the wheel and the road's seventy-five feet short, and you're paying fifty-six thousand dollars for a road that's supposed to be seventy-five feet shorter, why would you pay that?
You wouldn't.
You wouldn't. So those are why they, you know, they even have, you know, not that we have to do it, but they have a pre-action test, he can tell you, they all measure all this stuff. This is not, Jen, this isn't form, uh, informal language.
I'm not disagreeing, but this is done.
I mean, if it's done, I, you know, I don't know if the bills are paid or not. I know, I know the road's down, I don't know if the bills are paid.
I'm happy to do that with you, okay? Move on, what's the next thing you want to talk about?
Um, you know, I mean, you know, I got some heat last week about, uh, you know, criticism of some prior work that I did years ago, um, so I brought me...
I apologize to you.
I brought the invoice, if you'd like to read it, but it does say, uh, tent patch is what you paid for.
That's what we paid for.
And then it says that I had to rip out five aprons on Westbrook Road that the contractor failed to put in right and repair them from, uh, Warren Elliott's house all the way down to Jones Lane. And I just found it funny that I got criticized for a patch fee, but I had to go rip out the other contractor's work, and that was okay.
That conversation got a little more heated than I would've liked, and I apologize for that. I should not have spoken about previous projects that we worked on together. Um, but that was not what we asked, we didn't ask for a patch job. We paid for a patch job, and we have a patch job, but we're gonna have to go patch again. But that's not what we asked for. But the process was not as clear as it will be. So we will get to that.
So what's the process of moving forward, of drafting?
The process is, we're gonna build, build an RFP that is clear, that everyone gets, so it's not a conversation like it has been for the last six years. It is a written request for proposal.
Is it going to be into the, um, I mean, I would hope it would, you know, you know, also published on the website?
We will look into that with our, with our commentary, but I can't imagine why we wouldn't. Um, my intent is to continue to invite local folks to do the work. Um, that's, that's been my intent all along. For the first, the first two years that, that I was in office, we, we went just to low bids, and we had a couple of large giant, giant firms from the area, and the work was horrible. Didn't like the work, and it wasn't low. So let's, we, so that's when we started working with you, that's when we started working with J. Dibble, that's when we started working with Sullivan.
It's a double-edged sword there, Nick, when you start putting on a webpage.
I hear you, but you guys can also pay through that.
Correct, but again, you're, because an invitation to bid means an invitation to bid.
So what's our next project on forecast for bidding? When will you think we'll see this?
I, I expect, well, my hope is always to go out in December or January, so we can get, get going in the spring.
For the summer, yep.
Are they gonna be grinding the dumpster?
Dump, is, we've got a contract for the dump, and yeah, that should be in November is when that usually gets done. Spring and November, we do it twice a year.
Do you guys have any questions here, any input from the finance board on it?
Where finance, any questions? Our job is to put together a budget, which we then ask the selectmen to implement, execute. So we'll offer that they are the ones responsible for fulfilling the contracts. I'm gonna defer any further comment unless Square Finance wishes to comment. We, we certainly are concerned that it be done at the lowest cost with all those other issues, uh, local contractors, but we, we defer to the implementation or execution to the selectmen, and I'll stay silent after that unless anyone wants to add.
No, I mean, I, I, one comment, as stewards of the taxpayers' money in the town, we would like, you know, there should be discretion, of course, but it should be within reason, close to the lowest bid with discretion given to, you know, making appropriate considerations of the people that are putting the bids in, and that any RFP process that's put in place should ensure that the bids are, you know, apples to apples when it's opened up and looked at. That's my comment. That everybody's bidding on the same thing.
We'll have to transfer, uh, to...
That's all.
I appreciate your guys' time, better meet you guys.
What did you want from the finance board, why did you...
I just wanna make sure, you know, like I said, I don't know if bills are paid or not on this project, but, you know, it goes back to measuring, and make sure bills line up with the contracts that he was submitted. You know, I mean, he, he only knows what's, is said on the contract, whether it's Westbrook Road A, B, or C, who says which one's what.
But as a finance board, we don't...
Right, but you guys write the checks.
We aren't familiar with that.
Right.
We set a budget.
Right. And then you guys probably write the checks, the checkbook, right? So would there be a process saying that you guys see the contract? And then making sure the numbers correspond with what's on the RFP?
We check the numbers, we don't write the checks.
We allocate, we allocate the funds, we do not write the checks.
Okay.
Where we come in often is when things are over.
Overbid or overspent, and then why did that happen?
Not so much overbid, overspent.
That kind of thing, but in terms of running the town and doing, going through bids, you're, you're my first exposure to that.
Another thing you gotta watch out for, a double-edged sword, Nick, is also is when you start writing these RFPs and you're starting an apple for an apple, there could be liquidated damages put into these contracts. That whoever the contractor may be was supposed to do in three days, and it did two weeks, things about liquidated damages.
Yep.
So again, you know, these are things that I'm used to on the higher level.
Yep.
The life that I come from.
So then I would assume that the aprons were charged back.
I didn't really...
I would assume that the aprons being replaced would've been charged back to Dibble.
I don't even, I don't, I don't remember that project.
That was a couple years ago, whatever it's on.
I don't, I actually don't know, I, I... Aprons were not part of contract, if I remember correctly, but I'm not gonna speak about something that I don't remember clearly.
Well, we look forward to seeing a draft of the, um, the RFP process. Do you think that's something to push in the next month? It's pretty simple.
It'll probably be December when we get this done. I'm happy to share it with you and get your input when we're putting it together.
I'd like to see, uh, we have some input on it. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
All right.
Do we need to adjourn our meeting?
Um, yes, we, we don't need to, but we can, so we'll have a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn the selectmen's meeting. Second, you have a vote.
All those in favor?
All right. Let's just back to the board of finance.
Back to you guys.
Thank you very much. Uh, now, uh, so we sort of changed, if there is an oyster, Gary, you indicated that you had comments. You should feel fairly free to comment on anything, but I'd like to keep this conversation over. But please, Steve.
I understand, I understand, but I didn't stand it over. I just have a question, um, are the invoices from Sullivan and Dibble and stuff, the final invoices, public balance for...
Yeah, certainly, yeah, certainly.
So why didn't this committee get a copy of one?
Probably the, the appropriate way to do that would be through FOI, where we can certainly share it with...
I can send an email for that, that's fine.
Actually, no problem.
Thank you. I'm good.
Oh, geez, I'm always... It's good to be good. Uh, with that in mind, Tommy, we've certainly beat up the expectations for your, your report.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. See you, guys. Does everyone have the town's deposit report? I think I handed it out.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, let's just look at the, the general fund account balances, um, and see where we are. Total, total balances of six million, uh, three fifty-nine, seven ninety-five. Just comparing that to, to last month, we're, we're down a million, a million, one sixty-four, one twenty-nine. But, you know, that's, you know, we had received all our tax revenues, and of course, now we're, you know, accounts payables and paying, paying the bills. Uh, I did make, uh, four transfers, uh, from the last, uh, meeting to, to today. One on September twenty-eighth for a hundred and seventy-five thousand, one on October first for eight hundred thousand, one on October twelfth for two hundred thousand, and October twenty-fifth for two hundred thousand. So there were, the four transfers added up to a million, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. That's going from our Liberty Bank Municipal Sweep Money Market Account to our Citizens Bank General Fund. Um, now, if you go to the total balances, if you see on the bottom of, of the sheet, we have our total balances on eight million, one sixty-seven, three eleven. If we compare that to, um, last, last month, we're down a million, seventy-six thousand, three twenty-four. If we go back a year, ten twenty-six, two thousand twenty, uh, we're actually up a million, six ninety-one, three forty-one. But having said that, uh, remember, we just opened up that account for the, uh, ARP funds, the American Rescue Plan Act, and that, and that balance was six fifty-seven, five oh six. So if I subtract that from that last year's balance, we're up a little over a million dollars, a million, thirty-three, uh, thirty-three thousand, eight thirty-four. If you remember too, when I opened up the, uh, that ARP, that ARP fund, initially, they said we, we could not get interest. But now, and but, uh, when I talked to Angus and we looked into that a little bit more, uh, yes, we could, we can get interest. So, um, from the last month, we, we actually accrued forty-three dollars and eighty-three cents in interest. And so if you looked at, if you annualized that, well, we could make about five hundred and twenty-eight dollars on that, on that account. But it is something, so... Uh, our ECS monies, our education, uh, monies that are coming in, we've budgeted a million, six sixty-two, eight seventy. Uh, the first installment will be coming in the end of this week. Uh, we receive a quarter of that amount, or four hundred and fifteen thousand, seven seventeen, fifty cents. The next installment will be, uh, the same, a quarter on, uh, January twenty-ninth, or the end of January, and, and the, the big one that we see, a half, will be, um, on April thirtieth. I think probably I was gonna ask, I, I should really get in touch with Essex Financial Services and maybe set up. We haven't met with them for some time.
Yes, we need to meet with them.
So I, if you want me to do that, I will, I will do that.
That'll be good.
Okay, with James Sullivan and David May. That's for the, uh, the town employee and the firefighter's pension plans. Um, do you have a particular day that's best, or that I can kind of throw at them a couple of days, like during the week, if that's, uh, what's better?
I'm at school on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so...
About like a Wednesday?
Wednesday, Wednesday afternoon or evening would be great.
Cool.
So, do you, do you have a preference as far as the time?
I prefer mornings, but, um, but I don't know, well, you're not working anymore, so...
What do you mean, "I'm not working"?
Yeah, mornings are best for me, because it's less likely...
Is that okay? Bud, is that all right for you? Okay. All right, well, let me get, let me call them, and I'll see if I can get a couple of dates, and then I'll just get back to you.
Sounds good.
Set it up, okay? Uh, that's all I have.
Tom, how, when you move money from one account to the next, you identify dollar amounts, how do you estimate how much to move when you move?
Well, that's actually between Kathy. You know, I, I talk, I, I talk to Kathy as far as, you know, what we have to, for wire transfers, how much we'll, we'll need in the general fund to cover all our accounts payables, so it's...
Oh, she actually written the checks, or has not yet?
No, she hasn't written them. No, that's what she's estimating that we will need in, in the general fund to cover any, you know, bills that we have, accounts payables, everything.
So you're looking into the near future, and, and into the crystal ball, the near future, and you make a determination. It's different every time, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
She's actually got checks almost ready to be signed.
Yeah, yeah, right. And, you know, I think, I think we're in very good shape, and, uh, you know, I think we're, you know, again, we're, if we compare ourselves to last year and, and better, you know, better situation.
Well, we have been able to generate some surplus funds, and that sounds about the magnitude you're talking about. So, you know, surplus is always good.
Yeah, so we're, you know, like I said, we're a little over a million dollars ahead of where we were last year after taking out those ARP, ARP funds.
A million dollars is a nice number. Um, but it is a, and that, I mean, you've just proved it. We spent about a million, what did you spend last night? A million and a quarter, a million and five is what I estimate, because I like to round things, but, uh, it is a one score. But excellent, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Tom on, uh, dollars come in, dollars going?
Thanks.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. All right, uh, recommendations of selectmen actions, recommendations of selectmen and actions, all recommendations, do you have anything you wanna recommend?
Actually, there are two things that I'd like to speak about. The first is our, you know, I think it's time, and you and I've spoken about, and we spoke last time, about our memorandum to reconcile our budget. I don't know if you want to go into that now or if I even see that on the agenda, so we can do that.
I was going to, actually, I'm not sure when I was going to, I was going to do it as budget, but it is, now is a grand time.
Yeah, the second thing though, before we go into that, I want to ask, just give everybody a heads up, I would like to ask is, it's not on your agenda, but to add to your agenda, an executive session, something that came up today regarding IT negotiations. And if you can do that, I'd appreciate it.
When Angus is asking folks, and he gave me a hint that he was going to ask, we'll do, let's do our normal work and then we'll go into executive session. We'll talk about some of the things that Angus does not wish to have publicly known in the long term. And Angus and I can take it, this is from Angus, but if you remember, on an annual basis, we do these transfers. During the year, we recognize there is over expenditures that we incur. We have choices to make. We could move money to cover an over expenditure from some other department or from surplus. We have chosen to instead talk about it, record it, keep aware of it. There would be, we, we would take on more confusion if we started to act on every over expenditure. We are limited to $10,000 over expenditures, if in our authority, we would have to go to town meeting. You can only move monies into an account by state legislation once a year without going into, without going to a town meeting. It, we would, we make our lives and the towns a little bit easier and smoother in our expectation. We have added over the last year, a, an assumption that if we are overspending a line item, it is our opinion that there is adequate funds in our budget that we do not, there is no need to take it out of surplus. With that in mind, the sheet in front of you lists many of the over expenditures that we went over last month. I'm going to suggest you, if you look on page 1 of 1, which is your third page, but nevertheless, if you look on 1 of 1, you will see total unexpendited general fund, less over expenditures, so we have a surplus from expenses of 431, I shall not round, and revenues, we've collected about 141.5 of revenues not in the budget, giving us an approximate surplus of $572,73,000. That is down slightly from what we talked about last month. And so what we're going to do is take those line items, those departments that have line items underspent, we will spend and move some of it into, to cover the over expenditure. So when the auditors look at our budget, they will see we did not overspend, and they will see this task in front of us. For instance, elections overspent by $10,306, we have taken money from some other account to cover that, and we can continue down the line to talk about that. But there's about $50,000 of over expenditures, and what Angus is asking by this memo is, would you approve taking it from some funds that have surpluses and covering the over expenditures? Anyone wish to go into this in more detail? There is an item of interest hidden in these numbers, and it is, I guess, is it in Town Hall Operations, Angus, I guess? And we have in our current budget, a surplus in Town Hall Operations, Buildings Operations, is that right? Is that the right term?
Yeah.
Okay. And since, and Angus can add a date, since sometime in this fiscal year, Angus has been requesting bids from people to work on the Town Hall Garage. Why don't you take it from there, you have a bid, this assumes that we accept the bid that is given to us.
Yeah, we have, last year, we went out to bid for, to work on the town garage, the out, the exterior, the shell of that building needs to be replaced. It's, it's really, I was pretty astounded actually when I walked around it and saw the shape that it was in. So we went, we got bids. We have not been able to get the contractor here, the materials here to get the work done. He's ready to start it. That proposal was higher than we had in the town buildings line, but we have additional monies in the town buildings operations to be able to, to, to cover that cost. This is what we do, if we do this every year, it's just a matter of, this, this particular one, it took longer to get the project going than it should have. It's, we're three months into the year already, so.
Does anyone have any curiosities, concerns on this? Angus and I worked on it, it's ecological, we have excess funds from last year, we'll move into this line item, some of that excess from other departments, and we will cover the cost of, what is the word, renovating the, the town's garage in last year's budget.
The thing is, the work's going to get done, we didn't pay for it, it's really coming out of the same surplus, it's some of it surplus and it's not.
And the conversation that Angus and I had is, should we close down last year and just do that task in this year's budget, which will probably put us over and we would be in the same spot this year, so it just seemed logical to spend it from last year's money. It's a half a dozen of one, whatever you wish, whatever that phrase is. Anyone have any concerns, discomfort, we can change any of this, but it will be done, either last budget or this budget. Anyone have any concerns?
I don't, I don't like spending last year's money now that last year was done, but I understand where you're going with it.
We attempted to do it last year, and we got contract, we have a bid that is actually dated last year, they just couldn't get, so some, you could make an argument that we began the task last year.
That's what the auditors, we've done this in the past, it never has extended this far beyond, but the auditors.
But it was started last year.
Thought it was started, except the bid was started, et cetera. I actually said to Angus, I think it was Monday, it's time to call this over for last year, other than we got a contract and we're ready to go, so.
No, and we don't, like you said, if anybody's uncomfortable with carrying that, it's fine, we'll just, the project's going to get done, it's just, where do we pay for it out of this year as opposed to last year?
So I understand that you, the project was bid on last year, the money was there for it last year, but the project didn't get finished because they didn't have the materials to finish it. So now it's going to be finished this year, but it's something that was decided last year.
Yeah, that's, that's the point.
It has an appeal, but again, my comment Monday was.
That's why we're here.
But anyhow, it is in here, and if you're tolerant, I'd like to keep it in, in comber and then, and make these changes, transfers accordingly. Someone would make the proposal, accept Angus's recommendations.
I'm not someone.
I need a second.
Sure.
Second. Would anyone like to discuss it anymore?
Just, just one little question.
Yes.
Do we know when they'll be getting materials? I mean, there's a lot of supply chain issues, do they, do they think they'll have them this year?
He says he's ready to go.
Oh, he's ready to go now, so you think, so he says he has the materials now?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. But this contractor's friend will be yours in mind.
I think things have opened up a little bit, I don't know, not as involved as I used to be, but as far as I know, things have opened up a little bit as far as contract construction.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think you're right, yeah.
Okay.
No, no, good question, thanks.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. All right. It is that time to look at our budget. We are in October, which actually is all that, we're about 33%. Seems to me, I have looked at it enough, that it is at your discretion. I see nothing of particular great interest in the budget, one of the reasons is we were so early into the budget. Does anybody have questions on revenues, expenditures, they wish to talk about?
I'll just echo, I did look at it at some point over the weekend, and using your one-third rule of thumb, everything looks pretty good. One thing I wanted to ask about, but I have to find it, so go ahead.
There are certainly some things in there that do not match, but we, with a marker that asked a question, there are some things we pay quarterly upfront, et cetera, and they are certainly paid in that factor.
See if I can find it.
I remind you that the last meeting we discussed, and you still hold it there, that we over expended some of the police maintenance vehicles, and that will continue to be an over budget for more often.
Looks like we're doing very well on the conveyance tax.
Yes, actually, I did fly those, my brief memo did. It is, we are 56, 57% of tax revenue, which is completely a noble community virtue that everyone while in troubled times pays for taxes and conveyance tax, things that are still selling, and if you looked at building permits, they are, they're doing it very well. So, but there's just not enough information to really, I think, give them anything that stuffs. Russell, do you have, are you wish to pursue?
Yes. Political subdivisions, which, which always confuses me, because the name doesn't actually describe exactly what it is. But there's only 2% left, and there must be a reason for that.
We pay all those, these are charities that we make a contribution to and make those immediately.
These are more, these are more things like CCM, Conder, or political organizations that we launch, and we pay their, pay those dues, and we pay those at the beginning of year.
Well, that was easy.
And if you look, just keep, keep the excitement going, we are making great progress on, we are, I didn't do anything about it, the elementary school roof, if you noticed, we virtually have 15% left in that project.
Yeah, the library is all that's left to do on that. Again, that was, that was materials, I don't think they, I still don't think they've got the materials, because they're talking right now if they get the materials doing that over Thanksgiving weekend.
They were, you told me they're coming in on weekends and doing it.
They, they were, but that was the, that was the shingle part of the roof, the library is different material, flat roof.
Flat roof.
Yeah.
Those flat roofs will get you.
Oh, they sure will, they sure will. Any additional questions on revenues or expenditures through October? I see nothing that catches, should take our attention. With that.
I have a question. Do we expect the election section salaries and so forth to be more accurate and not run over last year?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. You know, last year was with COVID and all that kind of stuff, we fully expected that to go, go over, and it did. This year should be closer. It is still something that we need to look at, how we pay our registrars, and, and maybe even how we set this lineup, because it's, it's confusing, and money comes out from classes that may be for something else, and it may, I think it could be better defined. But yes, we will, we will be well within the budget on this year, there's no reason to think otherwise.
Right. All right. Anyone have any new business they would like to turn up? After that, we will go into executive session for, I guess requested by Angus, unless there's other items that people wish to do in front of the public. Hearing none? Did you call your meeting to an end?
I'm going to, we don't have any action.
Well, I mean, if you want to do executive session as well, see, what is the procedure?
Well, you need a motion to go into executive session. Part of that motion is who you're going to invite into executive session. And then what time it is when you finally vote to enter that. And then in executive session, we can make no decisions, we can make no votes, just have the conversation from out, and if you feel as if you need to act at the end of that, act.
All right. Does anyone wish to take a shot? I will suggest that we go into executive session at 8:30 and 8:28. Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen, Tommy, you're certainly invited to stick around.
I'd like to ask Joyce to stay too.
Oh, ask Joyce to stay as well. What is, what I'm comfortable, what I'm comfortable with is we will ask our camera folks to, to leave us. All right. I've, I've, I've deoned your.
Your motion.
I need a, that was my recommended motion, thank you.
I'm moving into executive session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, all right. We are in executive session. The deeper Board of Finance has come out of executive session at, as we call it, SBZAC, at 8:57, something like that. No action was taken at the, at the executive session. However, there was a discussion about IT security. Does anyone wish to, on the Board of Finance, make any comment or make a recommendation?
I guess that's me. We're going to make a recommendation to the first selectmen to continue to look into backup software and, and IT items that are required by the town, and in our discussion, we just thought it was an important thing to do going forward, and these things will cost some money going forward, and we acknowledge that. Good enough?
Good enough, it's good. Now, Russell praised it as a resolution. I'm not convinced it was a blind resolution, but I'm not sure it deserves to be recognized, I voted on, but does anyone wish to acknowledge or join in that, and say aye to Russell's ideas?
I'm not sure that it's.
I don't think it's a resolution that requires voting, and we all appreciate it. So, Tom, with that in mind, is there any additional business to come before the Board of Finance? Hearing none, can I have a motion to resign? Tori's right. Motion to retire.
Adjourn.
Adjourn. I knew there was something where we get, somebody has to leave. Adjourn, can I have a, I had a first, but I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, bud.